For pickle shaft.
So.
Second, motion second, discussion.
I have one question.
Sure.
The, did the one gentleman, Chris, Chris Hamlet, did he speak? I know we received an email from him, but I didn't recall if he actually spoke. It's not, if, if so, he's not in the minutes here, it's citizens to be heard. Does anybody remember?
No.
We got an email from him as far as what he.
I don't recall, but I'm sure, no down speaker?
He did not speak.
Yeah, he didn't speak. Okay. Anybody have other questions?
I had one other suggestion, which was on page, the, the last page.
We're still in the minutes, right?
Yes, uh-huh.
You have a suggestion or?
Yeah, the very last page. I would probably remove the first part, the first half of the sentence at the very top.
Or.
If you, I would probably remove that because it's kind of inaccurate.
Well, that is accurate, I made the statement and, and we have been working, so I definitely go with the floor.
Okay. That's a suggestion.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other, any other questions? Okay, on favor? Opposed? Motion Paris, thank you. Citizens to be heard. Yes, any citizens would like to come up, we try to see what the house has.
Do you want to give them first?
No. Yes, everyone, please come up.
Yep, I do.
Please come up, the county, the name of the draft, please, and.
You have to do something.
Sarah Rowe, for Dublin East Rand Line Township. I saw the agenda online, and I noticed here that nothing had changed. And I wanted, I had a few statements or questions, comments, what had been in the agenda. Notice we had no deferred issues. But, you know, why wasn't there, isn't there supposed to be a discussion about the, about the digital billboard? I mean, that was the whole thing about all the residents coming in last time. There were, they were, they were supposed to be here, purpose to hear your answer to what you've done about the sign. Also, I may be wrong, but I believe that Mr. Solms stated that there would be a two-week stay, but the tickets and citations, well, the total current parking issue could be resolved. On, on Little Jefferson, where, where letters sent out to the residents in the 100 block of Jefferson Avenue, just so I'd know that something, they're canceled, but people knew something about, that problem there.
Sarah, I can, I can answer those two. Yes, they will be put on deferred. Yes, we were working on both, and they will be notified. The borough had been working on them, and it is a very good idea to put them on deferred. I'll make sure they get on. So we, we, we haven't, we haven't left it. I, I didn't see it as an oversight on my part, so I'll make sure they get on, okay? And they will be notified, everybody.
Okay, I have, I have one, two more statements. The Parks and Rec Commission about the disc golf course update. The more I thought about it, the more I did not like it. In a, in a public park where you don't know where people are going to be. There are people in the woods, out, you know, strolling around anywhere, bicycles, kids learning how to ride a bike, you know, kites flying and so on. I am not, I don't know where these signs are going to be, where their, where their basket is going to be, and where this wants to stand. But if it's, if it's too close to the, to the water, they're going to lose their discs. And if it's too close to a, you know, a pavilion, somebody's going to lose an eye or a head. And the, also, if it's out in the woods, I think they mentioned in the woods. There's, there's a lot to be cleaned up in there, including the screen that's supposed to go, there's, it's like a floodway kind of a screen that goes to the park.
Sarah, I will help you, but it's in the very early stages. We love any input, if you can give us all, when we come out, which courses are etched in stone. It may be moving back, forward, more holes, less holes, so it's very early stage. Thank you very much.
You too.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, you're 121 East St. Mary Avenue. I was just curious with what was going on with the liquor license, with Anthony, if they can, for everyone, if they were going to allow the same advantages that a full liquor licenses has. I know that Steve said there's only two per year that they can allow to extend per, I guess, borough or area. And I was curious as to what effect it would have on those of us that had a liquor license, an R1 license, which is a full restaurant license that can be transferred or whatever. And basically, I was talking about St. Albert, and they decided, they changed their minds, that, you know, the paper says that it's a little vessel point, if people have pizza, but is that going to turn into a full bar, et cetera? And it's, you know, one end of town is fine, but if, as it creeps up, I was just curious.
I, I, I don't know anymore.
I tried to research it myself, or I can't because it's kind of a newer thing.
See if you can get back to you get an update, I'm sure if you want to get something formal, it'll get to you, let you know exactly what's going on.
I did, I did call, and I'm going to get whether the takeout is permitted, how much takeout.
And, and is it a full license? Those are the questions, and if you want to contact me, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that it was brought up again.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
They'll get back to you, let you know.
Thank you.
Now, if you have a question, you can call Stephen now.
Okay.
Okay? Back and forth, if anyone else.
All right, thank you, everyone. The first business, we have the billboards and the sign. We're not going to work on that. New business, we have fire supply hose bidding. Jackie, do you want to discuss that? Everybody else on the table, we have.
Approximately eighteen months ago, Keith, me down, myself, applied for a grant for supply hose for the fire department with the help of the fire officers. We were awarded that bid in the amount of thirty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars to purchase supply hoses. We put a hose committee together, the hose committee met over several months, to help with hose specs, put the specs out to bid, and you should have those, bid in the process. The bid were received, the bid opened in April 11th, 4:00 P.M., which I attended, we opened bids, we submitted the bids to the hose committee, and they went over the bids, and their recommendation, and I concur with them, is on the first page, option number two, the TPX hose, which is just a brand, for a total of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. That prices over the amount of the grants, the grant, the matching grant, ten percent, which we add budget in the fire department budget.
All right, I think Jackie was putting it to me. The grant was thirty-three, four twenty-nine, our match would be thirty-three, forty, or eighty dollars, and we have that in the budget, so you're open for approval to purchase those, correct? All right, council, any questions on the bid process, or which bid?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to follow this, because it really doesn't make sense to me, because this is, this is very new.
Did you want to speak?
And how do we, we, we need to, I'll give you a motion.
Citizens to be heard, who's already passed.
Why don't we do a motion to approve?
But I feel you do have.
And then we'll have discussion.
Well, do you want a motion to approve that, or just, I want questions about the difference of fire, just getting how we do it.
No, she, she. It's worth it. I can handle it.
We can bring them all in. Do we have the motion to, second? Motion second, now we have questions, or reds?
Yeah, I just don't, I don't understand, you say that the TPX, that that's the thirty-six thousand, and then on the other ones you have, you know, UFX, HFX, so you've got these different amounts here, the forty thousand, thirty-six, thirty. Can you, can you just explain those to me, so I understand them? And then, I, I understand the other things where you have the eight hoses and how much they're going to be costing, but.
The U, the, the UFX, TPX, HFX, is all different. It's the same, it's the same manufacturer, but it's different grades of hoses. Currently, the fire department is using the TPX. They had that, most of that hose in place for twenty-seven, thirty years.
And that's your preferred, that's what you have?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, they, they prefer the other, but it's, it's way over the budget.
The U, UFX?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else, Sarah?
Well, hold on, just, can you, just have it digested, if you would? And those are, okay, so those are the only options, you left out the TPX, and what's the matter with the HFX?
The HFX is a lower grade hose, we bid that just to get a comparison. My personal opinion is, the TPX is, is prime proof. Like I said, the HFX is a, is a lower grade. So, you know, we've been, like I said, we've been using the TPX for years, and with no, no issues.
Okay, and, and could you tell me, tell me once more, because I kind of missed, because I was looking at this as far as, how much is it that the borough is putting into this?
The grant was for thirty-three thousand, four twenty-nine. The total cost is thirty-six, eight, ten, and I believe the borough's, the borough's share was thirty-three.
A ten percent match, or something?
Yeah, ten percent.
Every, every.
Three thousand, three eighty, or something like that.
Thirty-three, forty-two, or eighty-two. Karen, do you have that figure exactly, the problems, but it's within twenty, it's, it's ten percent.
It's within the budget.
Right?
And did we anticipate that in, when we did the budget?
Yes.
I knew we had anticipated having a cost, we did a analysis, but I did recall we had that in the budget.
No, that, that's within the operating budget.
Thank you.
Any other question?
I do. What's the lifespan of the TPX?
Well, like I say, currently, we're using hoses that's been in service for twenty-seven, thirty years.
Is that beyond its lifespan?
Typically, NFPA says that you cannot test hoses manufactured before nineteen eighty-six. So, the past three years have been the first time that the hose has been tested in seventeen years approximately. So, we're starting, we're starting to see failure in the hoses.
Is the UFX a quality upgrade that is worth the four thousand? Will it provide longer lifespan? Because it seems that we keep our hoses pretty long.
Depends on the use. Like I say, I mean, you know, we, the hose committee met over several months, they, they received the bids last week, they met that evening, and that was your choice of TPX. I think that's, you know, they're being financially responsible, say, within the budget. So I think, you know.
Jeff, I can comment, that's what you guys do, you tasked that to take on that project. And some of these hoses are in age, some get messed up in the fire, some get run over, some get burned. So there's a lot of different things that they, they do other than longevity. Have you guys researched that, and that's what you?
That's correct.
Correct?
Yes, they met with two different vendors, they had several hose samples that were submitted with the bids. And it's just, it's a virtual.
All right, thank you. Any more questions?
Just a quick one. Jack, you said that they wouldn't test any hoses made before nineteen eighty-six?
Correct.
Does that date change, or was there a change in the way the hoses were made about that time?
It's just, it's just for safety reasons, and actually, you shouldn't have any hose. The whole NFPA, it's, it's kind of a debacle, because they actually recommend, there's other recommendations that you only replace, that you replace your equipment every ten years. So, like I said, it's, it's a cost, it's a cost issue. I mean, I don't know if that answers your question, but they should get another twenty to thirty years out of that. And I'm sure in ten years, the NFPA standard will change.
And so, one of my questions, if I could, since we started that, we bought these trucks. My big thing was buy a truck and buy the hoses. So you're starting off new then, unless they're fairly new, you know, you don't, you don't buy a truck and put those fires on. So, so what I asked them, what they'd like to try to do in the future, is to match everything up, so we can sync, and we're replacing them, and we know exactly what it is, so we don't have to buy hoses, radios, sirens, lights. Try to get, you know, when you go buy a car, you get everything on it, and that's what we're hoping to do, we're just doing catch-up now, correct?
That's right.
To try and bring everything in, in the spec.
I do have one more question.
Sure, all right. Wait, let me see if I have those up.
I am, thank you.
Go ahead, Anne.
Is this, I just assumed, and I guess I should ask, this is for all our fire trucks, all firehouses?
That's correct.
Okay, that's good. And then, what do you do with the old hose? Is, can it be recycled? Is there any kind of, any kind of getting the money back from all this?
It can be recycled, it can be, it can be sold on municipal, which we advertise vehicles on. The hoses that we're replacing is vinyl hoses, however, the cloth hoses that they have, a lot of the zoos were taking that, they were putting it in the, in for the, the animals and, and using it as, you know, climbing, climbing aids and different things like that. So, you know, I don't know if the zoo would be interested in vinyl hose or not, but, you know, maybe a farmer would be for irrigation, all of those types of things.
So is that something you'll do, instead of just throwing them out?
Oh, yeah, no, we're actually, we're actually, you know, try all avenues to recycle versus just start with the manual.
And then if you sell them, well, that's the money that you get will go towards, towards the.
The money that comes from that will go back to the general fund. As, as everything else is, is sold, the money proceeds go to the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
And Jackie, you do that with everything on your equipment, unless it's unsafe. If it's unsafe, you would sell it, you know, it's safe, but you always do that.
That's correct.
And, and the money always goes back in.
That's correct.
Also costs them.
Yes.
All right, so.
Go right ahead. Is there any warranty on any of the options?
There is a warranty on the hoses, unfortunately, I don't have the whole packet with me, but yes, there is a warranty.
Do you have any idea what the warranty is?
Off the top of my head, I think it's five years, but I can't, I can't really speak to that, I don't know.
Is that across the board, all of these options have the same warranties?
No, there, there's one hose manufacturer on here that will man, it's an all hazards warranty. So if it actually, if it gets run over, if it gets drugged down the street, if somebody hits it with an axe and cuts it in half, the company will replace it for that, that substantial amount of money for that, for that option.
All righty, now the question, we have the motion second to approve the bid. On favor? Opposed? Motion Paris, thank you.
Thank you, Jack, thanks to the committee for doing it. Planning Commission, we have a letter of recommendation to, where is it? Plan Commission, a letter of recommendation to reappoint Elaine, Elaine, Arlene, Moore, and Matt Ryan. So we have a motion.
So I do, I second that.
Let me sort that out. We have a motion second. Okay, this is ad, ad verit, the committee, which we are trying to do is keep in touch. Any questions on the appointments?
This is for, no, but Steve Penny's not being, oh, they're just switching, but Steve Penny was the meeting point, and it's just Matt Ryan that needs to be appointed.
Only the eight you're going here now.
Steve Penny was the great point of last year.
Okay, they're switching positions, but, yeah.
Yeah, that internally has nothing to do.
Okay.
Right now, we have the motion on the floor for Arlene Moore and Matt Ryan. Any questions on their appointments? Okay, now, motion second, on favor? Opposed?
Thank you very much, Karen.
All right, we have a motion to approve, oh, no, I'm sorry, disc course update. Tom, that's you, right? We have, we have an information packet in here, correct? And that's for us to go over, everybody to study, and come back if there's any questions, concerns.
We met with the golf disc committee, they walked the parks. And we asked them to pull the holes down in Johnson Town Park and see if they can favor the woods up in current park. They kept them well away from the golf, the playground. The request was not to cross any of the trails where at all possible. There's just a few approaches through the trails as shown on this map, they're in wide open areas. That's the change they came up with based on some of your comments. I sent an email around to everybody, I had a few comments, to walk the parks, suggesting those comments, and this is what they committed back to the council.
And Tom's question, so I can clean that up. When he says win, everyone was asked, and then we're on busy schedules, and it took a long time. Steve, Jackie, Tom, myself, and numerous people from the golf course did it. Everybody there voiced their concerns about several holes, moved it away, made it kind of pedestrian friendly. And I, I believe it's really great if you get, people have concerns that they could set up another tour with them to go through and actually show you the holes, because a map doesn't do you justice. I had no idea until we went there and saw it was crossing glass and stuff. So I think with this, Tom, maybe if you could get another meeting, if everybody looks it over and, and wants to meet you now sometime, it would be great. I didn't understand.
Do I walk? I can resend my prior email, or you have it, you know, whatever, you know, but then I'll set something up.
Sure, I, I mean, it, it's a good idea to really walk it, I, because a couple of those were crazy, I thought. And I was like, no way, somebody's going to get hit with that. And, and if you throw this, it's, it's, they'll let you throw them, they'll see what they do. And I had this thing about boomerang storm coming back, I did, and, and they're like, trying to do that, and I, and I couldn't do it. So, and it's really, in my, go ahead, Tom, I'll say that, I love it.
That's about it?
There is a gentleman here, just, if you want to.
Yeah, yeah, I should say, sorry, that's what I was going to say.
I do a lot of disc golf, so if I have any questions.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Only for Millie, the child, you can state your name and do your front, so she can help put on the record.
Over here?
Yes. Oh, she was actually right here, you can look at her. She'll be right here.
All right.
That's fine, I don't think that's wrong.
My name is John Flyer, I do a lot of disc golfing, and in fact, I just reached out recently, I think, to you, Chris, from.
He's with Parks and Rec.
Okay, with Parks and Rec, so I do a lot of disc golfing myself, I know a lot of people, and we do have a group, I think, associated with the committee here, kind of loosely, so if you have any questions about, yes, there are some valid concerns of, you know, golf discs being around where pedestrians are that don't know what disc golf is. It's great to see it in distance, but not where people walk and not understanding what a golf disc is, because they are not like frisbees, they're meant to be out in the disc golf area, dedicated area. But, yeah, I, I can work with the subcommittee, and we'll see about what we can arrange to picture off and something.
The other guys are great, they were very flexible, they knew, there's nothing etched in stone, we can move it back. We asked them to go back in the woods where there was less traffic and all, and they seemed very, very accommodating. And, and I don't think, unless you see firsthand, it's very, it, it changed my habits.
Well, I actually do disc golf course matches, done like a number of them, or down in Delaware, you can actually kind of. And I've actually, when I heard that, I put together a little, but we take into account current park also. But I don't want to undo anything that's already done, I'll just work with, you know, we'll get something together.
With the commit, yeah, they have a committee set up, so we, we're not the people to work with yet.
But, yeah, I mean, all the concerns are very well represented.
Any questions, Scott, or?
I'm sorry.
You just mentioned something in a strike, and you said that these are designated areas. I love that idea of disc golf, but this is not a designated area. This is probably fifteen acres of a public park right in the center of a quasi-urban community. Not as a designated area, people are going to be wandering through here on a relative frequent basis, Saturday, Sunday, things like that. Have you done any work in parks similar to this, that it's not going to be a designated, designated area?
If you're familiar with Ansonby Nixon Park, that's very well used by the public. And the disc golf course actually goes through the areas where people are not probably hit by a road disc, if you want to call it that. So plays a lot through the woods over there, and some of the open areas that are not areas where people go to, it's kind of like the fringe areas of the park.
I think that, and I don't know if this is way first to this time, it's just, there needs to be signage at hole one, or somewhere, or in the park rules where it says, things like that, that says that if there are people in your, in, within the distance of any of these holes, that hole gets skipped.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so that needs to be somewhere adopted on, on Parks for a Drive Day, on the first level, and some prior to our park's rules erect, you know, you kind of pass your eye when you walk by.
I just recommend a warning to people that, you know, keep watch for discs if you're near the disc golf course area, and if you have a map of the area.
Great, I can't wait to go out and do this off with council, I think I can show out some of the.
I'm sorry, Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, there's a whole question, so I mean, since we're not, we're not actually getting into details here, but. With this golf in general, do you always have to have eighteen holes, you have nine holes? Do people still walk around if it's only nine holes, and is that as popular or as much of a draw?
It's, it's a very good question. I work, I play with a lot of people who are both amateur and professionals. Disc golf right now is kind of on the uptrend, and reason I say that is, you know, the disc golf tournaments are like filling up within days, whereas even two years ago, it would take weeks. So, I mean, it's becoming more popular, it's very well used, you know, good use for areas of parks that are underutilized. You can do it year-round, so, you know, it's good for that, I mean, I do it probably about two or three times a week. But nine holes don't tend to get as much traction with the pros, maybe more so for beginners. It's, it's a balance between interest of the professionals, because it's really the professionals and the, if you want, diehards, people who do it on a regular basis, who are interested and will help the cities maintain holes. It's like, okay, we need a little bit of help here, we need to do this. And, you know, for instance, it's like, why is it important to cut the grants, because if people are losing frisbees, they're not going to come. And then if it becomes abandoned, what was worth all the money spent? So, I mean, it's just, it's a balance.
Do you have a certain age group that this is really most attractive to?
It's across the board. I mean, I know people in their seventies that are playing.
And how young do this, is that really? Because the discs are heavy, right?
Uh, no, there's, they vary in weight. There's as much variations of disc golf, or golf discs, as there are golf clubs and ball golf. I mean, it's, it's mind-blowing, sometimes. Anyways.
Thank you.
Great, any other questions? It's easy to go on Google and find cases where somebody's been injured, a bystander's been injured by a, by this. But I'm asking you, in your experience with the sport, the hobby, and have you known anybody just getting hit, losing an eye, anything like that?
I have seen that.
How long you been involved?
I've been doing it for about four years.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Guys, it is very, very interesting, you can handle it on the floor and see it, and, and you can tweak it, do it, throw them, and it's, it's really something. All right, thank you for that update. Okay, motion to approve within one five master plan application, block number one. Have a motion? So for the second? All righty, Tom, I guess you go out this, you have several people out there for your work questions, you can kind of.
This came to council last year, and you approved an ordinance for development of that track. If you remember, there was a three lot subdivision for the entire parcel of ground on the eastern side of Woodbine, Woodbine Road. Current approval in front of you is strictly for block one of that original plan, which is the section adjacent to Route Thirty. There was an original concept of options of what's allowed in the ordinance, they decided to go to straight residential use. I hid a letter in December, I don't know if you remember, you had a compliance commission attachment, but where I reviewed that plan, and I had some comments, but since December, I'm here with the planning commission, and addressing those concerns, I met with the traffic engineers on those issues, to revise the master plan to address all the concerns the planning commission has. You have a letter in your packet from the planning commission supporting the approval. I issued a letter tonight just to wrap up the package and document my review, if you want to make that motion contingent upon my letter. That simply documents what happened at the planning commission.
And this is still going to go, tell them the process, it still has to go through.
Even though, even though you're approving a master plan, and the ordinance is written to require a master plan before they can proceed with subdivision land development. So there's still a requirement that I have to go through the entire subdivision land development process, this is step one. And it's more to get a feel for the character of the development, and quite frankly, the planning commission made that one through multiple iterations of architecture to get what, what we call a high-class project. And, and this is what they ended up with, and there's our renderings in that plan, in the packets, in the architecture.
And your pack, and your letter, Tom, your, your letter, the recommendation with some changes, so you, you would like to have that out of there? As per your letter, correct?
Correct.
And, and how many changes were in that?
There's no change from the original plan. There's no change from the original plan. There's no changes to the plan that's in front of you. It's just documenting what is in front of you. But, it acknowledges that they have to do the subdivision land development, they have to do the stormwater project. And the fact that they did the traffic study, and they did the requirements that are addressed, that are asked for in the ordinance.
But, that's, that's a must do anyway, they would still have to do that with or without the letter? Or you just want the letter as a backup?
The letter's just a backup.
So, they would still have to do it even if we didn't have one?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, we can amend the land development process anyway.
Because we can amend the motion once a day.
Oh, sure, no, that's your plan.
Yeah, absolutely, no, we'll amend it, just make it clean, we like things clean. You guys have questions for Tom right now?
I do.
We'll start with Tom.
First of all, I think the design is beautiful, is there a price point yet for this, do you have any idea?
The developers here for those kind of questions already asked that.
Right, do you guys wanna come on up and?
Good evening, David Delaporta. You know, it'll take us two years to build this, and so, things could be different then. If we were leasing today, I would say the range would be twelve hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars a month.
So comparable to the Ave down the street?
A little bit higher than the Ave down the street, which we did, you know, six or seven years ago.
And can I just ask, is this the, you originally talked about some condos, maybe, is this solely apartments?
This is solely rental apartments.
Just for you.
Yes, just lot one.
Whatever the market drives.
What's shown for lot one is strictly apartments, all rentals.
Okay, thank you.
I have a few now. So, why, when do you anticipate the development?
Immediately, immediately, we'll do our engineering, submit it to you, since it's great.
Why are you anticipating two, two years before you put shovels in the ground if you're gonna?
Now, for full construction.
The idea of a master plan development, as was presented by Comito, was an easier way to go through the bank process, probably cheaper, but also circumvented a conditional use hearing. Are there, correct me if I'm wrong, they're not going to do conditional use hearing, because we adopted a master plan development. Okay, is there anything that you wish, that we could have put into a conditional use hearing that maybe we don't have opportunity to discuss, that we went through a new way of fending?
I covered that very question in the recent, some guidelines, if you remember, there was initial ordinance, and then we decided to do more defiling guidelines, and started the conditional use. Those are the guidelines, and in there, I did put my wish list in, which is a regional stormwater park, which is gonna help that entire park run to the borough, it's huge. And I did put that in those, those design guidelines, and they are compliant with that, so that's how we covered that.
So, any of the things that you would have proposed are conditional use hearing, you think they're not, do this get any, your process?
They're doing the trails, they're doing the drainage, we're doing that street skate, and they're doing some major highway improvements.
Do you have an idea of what the property assessment will be?
Not, not at this time.
I think he's getting, I'd like to know what the taxes would be.
Yeah, I mean, uh...
Just a rough idea, it's a, it's a bit of town.
I, we haven't done a whole fiscal impact study, but I can tell you, my experience, you know, can be very fiscal and positive, predominantly to the school district, because that's where most of the real estate taxes go. I would say this size community, the net annual surplus to the school district would be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't understand the borough's budget enough to know how, how it would impact the borough. I believe very much it would be positive, but I can tell you that for the school district, it would be significant.
What's the breakdown of one bed, two beds, three beds?
It is about five percent three-bedroom, and then evenly split between ones and twos.
And is any of that adopted in the master plan, that they're restricted to a certain amount of three-beds versus one-beds and two-beds?
No. We do address that at the planning level, and we did define that in detail, and we talked about, it also goes into the parking count in those discussions. They did a full-blown party study, and those numbers are defined in there, and within reason, they're gonna stick to those numbers.
The loss of the commercial space affects economics of this a little bit, right? The commercial space would pretty much exclusively pay to the school district versus rental, rental three-bedrooms, which are, the three-beds will probably take away from the school district, the two-beds might be given ones and paid, some are, two-beds might fly away. What's the likelihood of commercial ending up with property, is it completely that, I know it was a component of what we talked before?
Just on this lot one?
Yes, or in the project hall, I can speak on the microphone.
Is there anything else beyond lot one, it's just the?
Well, we have lot three in the back end, which you assume is more forceful.
So, at this point, it doesn't appear there'll be any, any commercial.
Okay, what percentage of AVE is leased out? AVE, which you've previously said, what percentage of that is leased out, leased?
Is leased, they're, they've been stabilized for years, so they range from ninety to ninety-five percent, you know, occupied all the time. It's been that way for five, six, seven years.
Okay, I'm good.
And I think one of the questions, these are going to be high-end units that are very crowded, but it's low to no impact on borough services, am I correct, Steve? With the, with the ordinance and the way they're set up, it almost doesn't affect, I'll say the, the, the sliding coming in.
It's pretty much self-contained, I didn't realize the units were broken down in the master plan. I thought that was quicker than that.
They're in the parking space.
Oh, it's parked.
I'm sorry, have the other question?
Just, are there elevators in these, or?
There are, there are elevators, enclosed carriages.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, I'm sorry. Five buildings, right? Don't go down this way, I'll come back, I promise. I'll say it this way, I'm sorry.
What's your target audience for occupancy?
Uh, everyone.
What is, what is your anticipated target audience?
I have to tell you, it's so changed, I've been doing this for about thirty years, and, you know, it used to be very easy to give an answer to who rents apartments, you know, it was a lot of younger folks mostly, or some communities were designed for older folks. Now, and for the last five, six, seven years, literally, I get every age group, every demographic. I just completed a community that's almost leased up in Newtown Square, very similar in terms of, you know, the size, and the types of units, and features, the quality. I have twenty-two-year-old, you know, young kids out of college, and I have ninety-year-old single women. I have everyone in between, professionals, empty nesters, some families with children, very few of them. I would say the least demographic you get are families with children, they're looking for something else, you know, a home, a yard, and the like. So, I would say we get a lot of professionals, young professionals, they're twenty-five to thirty-five, and then we're getting a lot of empty nesters, you know, mid-fifties, and, but it really is a very wide, broad neighborhood.
Cap, anything else?
I agree for now.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, um, as far as the price, how does that compare to, let's say, Norwood and Blackhawk Apartments? You probably did a price comparison as far as the rentals, so how much of it's increased, or are there some that are comparable?
There's really not, Ave is the only one that's comparable really close by. You have to go more out to some of the newer communities on Two-O-Two in West Chester, to be comparable to what we're talking about. So, it's gonna be, you know, several hundred dollars at least a month above some of the older communities.
So, this is gonna be bringing in a whole new demographic, this isn't, this isn't gonna be using any of the current, I guess you'd say, they wouldn't be saying, oh, hey, we're gonna go right there instead of right here.
It's probably more new than, there might be some of that, we get a lot of folks that move up from what they call Class B or C, older apartment communities, if they can afford it, and they want the new features, you know, they will move up. But mostly it is, we tend to get, you know, a lot of newer folks that you don't have this housing choice right now in the borough, and hey, we wanna live there, and they have that housing choice, and it'll bring some new folks in.
And you said, you, did you build Ave?
Yes.
Okay, and how has that been as far as having people in there, do you have much vacancy, do you have a waiting list? Is there, how is that doing?
It's been consistently in the mid-nineties occupied since really, you know, the beginning, so it's been very stable, it's been very successful.
Then, one, a couple of things I have here as far as the, this lot one, this is right up on thirty, and if I'm not mistaken, aren't there a lot of wetlands there?
In the front portion of the lot, there are, and they're staying as natural areas and/or recreation features.
No. Okay, so, so you're not gonna, I don't know if there are any natural streams or streams, if there isn't a natural one. Okay, so, so you're working with Army Corps and all that to make sure that?
We're not clutching, we're staying.
Impact is minimal, okay.
Yeah, the nice thing is, we have that, we have a great piece of open space, you know, so the buildings are really gonna be set back several hundred feet from the pipe, and we have a nice park we're doing right along the frontage, then we have that natural area that'll give a buffer, and then the buildings are.
Now, on Route thirty, and I didn't, maybe it's in here, I didn't see, from Route thirty, are you gonna be seeing the side of them or the front of the building?
Well, there's five buildings, so you're gonna see pieces of each of them.
Okay, then the only other question I have is about the parking. Now, as I was reading through this, it, tell me if I interpreted this right, that are you looking for some sort of a waiver for your parking with this?
Correct. Yeah, we're looking to set a portion of the parking aside and reserve. We will design the stormwater and build the stormwater system as if that parking was going in today, as part of the plan. But what we'd like to do is simply grade those areas and have them as longer green areas until such time that parking may be required. We agreed to ordinance provisions with the township through the suggestion, or with the borough, through the suggestion of Tom Comito when the original master plan concept ordinance was adopted by the borough. Since then, we've brought David in, and David is the apartment expert. His numbers tell us, or he's told us, your way of parking with the borough considers some reserved parking. It's actually permitted by your ordinance. The planning commission asked us to, or staff did, and we presented it to the planning commission, to prepare the study that we did that justifies it. But, you know, if there's a problem with parking, it can very readily be added and brought into compliance with the borough ordinance requirements.
Who's going to decide that?
Either the owner of the apartment complex or the borough, I mean, it's gonna be either or.
You'll have, you'll have that, right?
David will notice it before you do.
One of the most important things to the success of a community is that there's sufficient parking. So, the last thing you never wanna do is put, you know, insufficient parking there.
And that's self-contained, that's not, that's like somebody's not going to school here.
It's completely self-contained, we have full-time, on-site, seven-day management, and, you know, all that maintenance.
I had, did have a question about the stormwater, is it gonna be underground? Do you have the, and you're able to do that with the?
We're still designing that, so we'll, but I think it's gonna probably be most.
It's because of space constraints and the insensitive environmental areas that went up.
By having the lesser parking, how much surface area of, you know, tarmac are you not going to be putting down?
We have Nick Rikaski here.
Three square feet or not? A lot of these questions in land development, a lot of these will be had to answer, am I correct, Tom? This is stuff that we're gonna be going through.
Are we approving this now with as far as the, the less amount of parking? Because if we are, then I think I'd like to know more about it now.
The, the less amount of parking is a buy rights option in the ordinance, so there's nothing to approve there. It's just a review process that goes into land development, and it's in there for good environmentalities, we're differing in as far as good environmental.
I'm gonna have a full proof option that's environmentally.
Quarter acre?
Quarter of an acre.
Quarter of an acre will be able to keep green and untouched, not disturbed, will be less runoff, less clearing, less grading. Should be a positive for everybody.
And I don't mind reducing the parking some if it's green, but I think it's been reduced a little bit too much, and I did look at the numbers as far as the, a lot of it's been red, red light, I know so many people won't have cars because they got public transportation and stuff like that, and our public transportation here stinks. We don't have reliable bus service and things like that for people. If you have people who are coming in there and saying, I'm gonna use public transportation, which would be great, they're not gonna be served, well-served, and you're gonna have some very frustrated people. However, I would love it if you could say, we will go ahead and reduce the parking, and you can work with Scepter or somebody to try to get, it would be in your best interest, and for your, for your tenants, to try to get a really good bus service so that they can get to the train station on time for work and stuff, so that they are encouraged. You do bring in, you are looking to bring in a different type of demographic, and people that are commuters and can use the train. So, I would, I would strongly suggest that if, if we're going to be reducing the parking, that I would, I would like to put a little bit, throw a little bit back on you to say, alright, then how about if you go out and try to get some, work with whoever it is you have to work with to improve the public transportation?
The bus does stop today.
It's not on time, I've heard so many complaints about it.
It stops every half hour right in front of P G Hill, and probably about a hundred fifty yards from the park.
I've heard a lot of complaints about it not being on time and not reliable, and if you have people who want, even if they can have their own bus stops, like those things, so that they can get the train, it's just something. So, that would be my suggestion, but as it stands right now, I don't like the parking being reduced as much as it's, I would like to see it be around maybe three hundred thirty spaces with your overflow of fifty-seven. But, as I looked through the numbers and I was doing percentages, I thought, well, what would be a reasonable percentage of the cars that the people would, you know, one better or two better, I would have. I came up with three hundred thirty, it would be a really, to me, a very comfortable number to approve, and then have a little bit of like footprint.
You can certainly revisit that as far as land.
Thank you, any more questions?
No.
Alright, no, I'm sorry, I don't have any.
Just a quick question, five buildings, how does that, how's the order go? Do they build one top to bottom, then start the next one, do you do them all at the same time?
We do them all at the same time, but it's an assembly line. So, we'll do that main building first, because that houses our amenities, and we wanna, our leasing center, we wanna have that open first. And then we'll move, and I'm not sure what the order is yet, but he'll take the concrete sub, and he'll go to the one building, framing sub, and then he'll move, and so you'll just move the subcontractors around, but you build the whole thing at one time.
So, they, the buildings will open one at a time?
They will open one at a time, but in a very short timeframe, you know, of last, very short timeframe.
Alright, guys, okay.
Just to follow up, Anne, you said three hundred thirty spaces? I'm looking at the parking standards, it says three hundred forty-four constructed spaces.
Yeah, I think our, I think our requirement is four oh one, and we're reserving about fifty-five, so we are, we are building three fifty-ish. And just, our, our parking reduction does not rely in any way on assuming the public transportation. It's all really depending on my actual counts of how many people park at my communities and other area communities, and what we're proposing to build is even in excess of what actually happens.
You're not gonna build a place that are parking.
I won't be able to lease units like that.
You're gonna have to hear that from people, and you don't want that turnover and all that. Guys, I think, Tom would like to add that letter, so is there any chance of either rescinding the motion or having a secondary motion to include Tom's letter?
Make secondary motion to approve Tom's letter to the, to the.
Apply the letter to the. Woodbine master plan application.
A secondary.
With, with Tom's letter, how'd that help? Very confusing. Any questions about Tom's letter, is there anything we changed? Okay, all favor, opposed? Very good, thank you, guys, appreciate it, of course, I'm happy to go. Alright, next, purchase or recycling bins, Steve's been kicking this around, we do have a grant, we do have the money, and you're looking at a couple different options, Steve, you came up with.
Yeah, I mean, when we went through the trash, I guess, toter program here in the borough, we decided that ninety-six gallon bins was what everyone wanted. We didn't wanna have that many variations, because you have to buy these cans and bulk. So, with the recycling program, some of the comments we heard with the toter were residents that didn't really have room for them in the closed, in communities. So, I mean, obviously, we wanna promote recycling, we'd like that to be the ninety-six gallon can, but I don't know if that's really feasible, since we do pre-leave collection here in the borough, I think we could probably look at the sixty-gallon, sixty-five gallon toters. So, that was kind of a thought, obviously, we didn't get any pricing yet or anything, but just wanted to get some feedback from you guys to see if that was something that you were interested in pursuing, to get uniformed cans instead of the small toters we have now.
You're talking about just totes for recycling?
Good, we'll go on with this, thank you. And just an update on that, Steve and I had talked, and we, he was considering two cans, bigger can and smaller can, same design, the only difference would be the lid, so you know which one's which. So you know which one's which, and interchange them. He doesn't have to buy two hundred for trash recyclable ones. Recycling ones, two hundred for trash, two hundred for recycle. You can have a hundred on hand and interchange them just by changing the lid. So give the option of getting a bigger one for, for main, main recycling. I recycle lots, I do like a big one. But again, let's just say Pat, who can't wrestle it, has the option of getting the next size down.
And just change the lid. So you've got two different sized cans, but if you wanted the big one to be recycling, you put a yellow lid on it for recycling, and then a smaller one would have a, you know, black one.
In a drop tray, depending on your week?
I...
Pat's on a party and she wants to...
Yeah, I mean, I know it's confusing, and that's just a thought. I mean, I don't know how the trash hauler would feel about that because he'd be looking for, obviously, a yellow lid when he recycles. But I don't, I'm sure the trucks could be set up to handle a ninety-six for a small two.
Yeah, we can talk though, Matt. We're just gonna get your input. Tell you, any input on...
I've been pushing through these toters for the cycles for a couple of years, and I just think that after we get past this, then eventually, we're gonna have to start replacing some of the toters that we just bought a couple of years ago. And then when that point comes, that we might wanna explore that. At that point, getting some smaller toters. And then if anybody, like a senior citizen, little old lady out there who has the big one, wants to trade it for the small one, and then a full-size family that would prefer to have a big one, you know, just...
Phil, this is our option. I don't know if I explained it, so he, he will get some smaller cans.
So that's interchangeable with our current toters?
Right, so if you, if you want a big one, the big trash is gonna be that color. The big recyclable is gonna have a yellow lid. But if you wanna go with a smaller trash can, don't have that. It's gonna be the same can, just a different lid. So, so people that can't handle the bigger one can get a smaller trash can with a smaller lid. So we don't have to double order, we don't have to have a thousand extras. We can have a hundred of each and use them for either or just by changing the lid.
So if a senior, say a senior citizen wanted to have two small, everyone wouldn't have the big can. We could just interchange and give them two small cans. One would have a black lid, one would have a yellow lid. Sounds great.
So do we know that the trap, the recycle hauler or the trash hauler, two thirty-four has the big can out, and two forty has the small one out? Does this guy have to make any adjustment in his arm or...
I don't think so. I mean, they're all interchangeable from what I understand, even if it's a automated collection system. I mean, they wrap, they wrap with either can. The back is just a lift station. So I don't think it's gonna be a problem, but again, I don't know that. I haven't had a conversation with the hauler.
But it wouldn't change anything from what's done today. I mean, they're still picking them up with it, I mean...
And then, you know, we'll have to talk to them, obviously, about collecting those cans because the original bid award, I think our contract is up the end of this year, so it may be a good time to... Because right now, they, they did it out of twenty-four hundred homes, one ninety-six gallon toter, and then a small recycled bin. So if we go with toters, that's gonna change the collection cost a lot, so...
This is just a discussion. We're not buying the night or doing anything. You still have to talk to Kerry, and this is just, maybe that we're interested...
Yeah, if you guys are interested in proceeding with recycled cans, you know, or...
No, well, hey, there...
You can't put your recyclers out. There's been a lot of windy nights lately, and I, I hate that even my Cocoa Puffs box, if I'm on down White House Avenue, so...
And we're hoping, like myself, I want a big one because I wanna recycle a lot. When my recycle will get full, I can't put anymore out. So it goes into the trash. So this way, you know, I'm gonna have all my trash and use a lot for recyclers, for some people, no. And if you get a big one, you don't have to put it out. You can put it everywhere, if you have a... I'm sorry, any more questions?
That sounds great, let's do it.
How is it?
Wait a minute, we're gonna go ahead. We, we have a grant, and I believe Steve, I told him, we have the rest in that month. So it's no, no extra cost to the guys, right, Steve?
No, there would be, as far as I know, I mean, I'll discuss it with Kerry, but a preliminary look at the budget, there would be no increase in the fees the residents pay. We do get a recycling grant every year, and we've been saving money for the past three years. So I think now we have enough in the fund to support it, where there's no cost for the residents.
Our trash refuse, high-tech fund is...
And this could drop our tipping fees down. Yeah, in recycling, we get money, trash repaid. So we're hoping to pull some trash, not trash, but recyclables and put them in. So, yeah.
Still?
Alex?
Is there any expiration on the grant?
We already received it. We apply every year. Kevin Lord, our codes office, applies for the grant, and this year, I think, we received twenty, twenty-five thousand. So, so that twenty-five thousand really put us up where we can afford to buy these cans now without increasing the cost to the residents, so...
All right. Okay.
Jack? If we go ahead with this and we're required, I think every, every house will get them. And they won't have the option of not getting them.
Well, I mean, that, that's kind of up to you guys. I would recommend that if we're gonna do this and expend the funds, that every house, it should be a uniform collection.
Okay. What about the areas such as East Lancaster Ave, you know, over by, or a little farther up, past Station Taproom, where they just have their trash cans on the sidewalk, that's all the time? And now they're gonna have a recycling bin on the sidewalk all the time? And I think this also is, could affect, you know, in Johnson Town, there are some areas on Bradford where we have similar problems where they're just recycling them, and we're not doubling this.
Well, right now, they have two and three small toters out, the recycle bins, we call them. I don't know exactly how many gallons they are, but, I mean, they're gonna take up less space if you think about it. You have three bins out versus a small six gallon.
Yeah, but we're still gonna have, I mean, the same people that are just leaving their trash cans in front of their homes or businesses, say on East Lancaster Ave or Little Lancaster Ave, they're now gonna have a recycling bin and trash cans. And no move will be able to walk down the sidewalk. It won't be quite that bad.
But right now, if not, they leave all the trash in there. At least now, you have a covered container without stuffs. It's gonna be blowing all over the streets and the trash must be...
Well, I mean, with a smaller, with a smaller recycling bin, you can take that at times. It's difficult to take a larger one inside.
How many people, you know, I've never been in my trash, my recycling bin inside. That's just me. I don't rinse everything off, but I mean, we...
I don't see these recycling bins outside, so we might have to assume if they have them there inside.
A lot of them are smaller. I think when you get the lids and get away from that, you're just gonna be uniform in town. And people don't go by and say, "Hey, look at that recycling thing over there," or "Kirk," better than, "We'll go by on the windy day and we see all the trash in there." That's just my opinion, you know what I mean?
We might wanna, you know, if, if a citizen chooses to opt out, Dave, you have the option to...
But the whole thing is to try and get more recycling. The more recycling you do, and you start giving a lot of programs, a lot of different options, then we have extra containers to have. We're already given the option of a smaller container versus a bigger one, so if they can pull back. So to have a, a, a whole program for, for twenty individuals is, is kind of hard. They have to manage it, deal with it.
I'm concerned about the unsuitability of them being left out on the leave sidewalks.
Good. Okay, Dan?
Yeah, I didn't hear the answer. Does, does the grant expire? So Alex and Anne, I was...
We received the grant, and we've already received it, so...
So it's just done, you don't, there's no magic, that's just from...
The grant is derived from the amount of borough recycling.
I think it's based on that.
The more we recycle, the more money we get.
So, yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's good. I think we should go cheap, just don't, I wouldn't, you know, whatever's inexpensive to the people and, and is efficient. That's what we should do. But you said that the contract is up at the end of this year. So we'll, we'll probably be putting out RFP, I guess, to, to see what it takes. So can we put out, when we put out the RFP, can we ask for, you know, what it would be as far as with the big toters? You, you put in all the different options, right?
Yeah, we always do that. We give options on days, container types, and everything. So, I mean, hopefully, we'll have it nailed down to what the program is actually gonna be and what we're actually looking to collect and pick up by then. But we can all, always do an option.
Because can we, can we get recycled toters, but then they, just, but they're not necessarily, you know, what do we have in there? We have the little, the no-gos in our, in our big toters. Like, they're pretty expensive because they're, so they're not, they're not stolen, you know, so they have those...
They're, they're all serial numbered and they remain with the house, yeah.
Right, so is that what you're talking about, even for the recycle bins, to kind of, to get something back?
I, I would imagine we would have to do that, and that's been very helpful because the cost for replacement is a hundred dollars for a resident who moves and takes the can or whatever happens. We've had some that have been stolen. We've recovered some, but it's based on that serial number. So there's a database we have that every toter in the borough is tracked by whom. So I would imagine we would just follow suit with recycling.
I think it's a fine idea. I just think we, we do have a challenge, and that's something the council's gotta figure out. We definitely have a challenge with some of the houses that just don't have the room. They just don't. I remember Brenda, Brenton, talking about that extensively because, and some people don't have room at the side of their house. So whereas they used to be able to put their trash can at the side of their house, they couldn't anymore because the toters were too big. So, and that's where looking at a smaller toter would come in. I remember we had talked about that. So, so I think we just need to really take that into consideration with, with now adding an additional toter to their limited amount of space that these, some of the residents have.
I think if they opt into the two smaller cans, I don't really think it takes up that much more space. If they have two smaller's versus a ninety-six and a sixty, I think they would save space if I had two small.
We haven't had any trouble handling the trash program. You don't, you don't want people coming and calling and complaining and...
Well, I mean, if you're, change is painful, that. We started the program, everyone was up in arms, "We hate it, we hate it." Now try to take their toter away.
Now they're over the top, remember? It's like, I don't need a big thing and the lids don't float. And, and every, we voted on, Steve, how often does that contract come up for, for the trash? It's a...
I think we do a three-year with a one-year extension.
Yeah.
I think we're in the extension period now.
And you do every one, and we voted on them in the past. He exhausts all the different avenues, different plans, them paying, us paying, and comes with us with several different carriers. So we, we look at that as we've done in the past. That's what you do in a day, correct, Steve?
Yeah, it'll all be laid out, and I select the options you want.
We do, so we don't just say, "Huh." I'm sorry, any other questions? Or should we give the approval, go ahead and start getting prices, move ahead and...
Yeah.
Place the things out, maybe talk to the trash hauler, getting an idea what that would be, and a lot of different options. Is that okay, everyone? All righty, very, very good, Steve. Thanks for following. Ordinance two thousand sixteen, that's oh three, alcohol, alcohol and beverage amendments. I know Jeff, you've been going around, I know Anne, you've been changing some things. Can I have a motion to advertise some of the taxes about?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussions. I don't know if you start down at your end this time, Anne. Do you have questions? I know lots have been going over the internet while you're changing and doing changes. Do you have any more that you'd like to change or update?
Well, we were talking about some things. I, I'd actually like to start with Jeff because he's, yeah, I really would like to start with him.
Okay, so what, what we have in front of us was the combination of mine and Anne's comments. There... So I guess first, be real quick one. Dusk to dawn or six AM to twelve PM? That I think is a discussion topic and possibly an amendment there. It's currently six, yeah, this is for the, this isn't for the alcohol part, but this is for the cleaning up of the parks and playgrounds. We have parks open daily to the public between the hours of six AM and twelve PM. However, it was recommended that we could also go with dusk until, or dawn until dusk at the opening time.
What does it say now, what are the five things, we have seven?
Six, uh, six AM to twelve PM. All right, I'm sorry, let me...
But the park signs, they dawned at dusk, so people are generally...
We have to change the ordinance or change the signs?
Right.
You wanna know what our pledge is?
Pretty much. I, I'm actually for dawn to dusk.
Okay. Guys, that's what, that's, guys, okay with that, Jerry?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, oh, we have one.
What about the basketball kids?
It, it states further down in this section that those activities are under the supervision of historical or parks commissions and those who have permits.
Wait, 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 are you just wanting to change the dusk to dawn for the alcohol? Or the dusk to dawn for the parks altogether?
This is for the parks altogether.
Oh, great. That's a different story. I thought we were just doing the alcohol. That's, that's...
Well, this ordinance, this ordinance has some alcohol provisions, and it also has some cleanups to the parks if you guys are going through this whole...
So if you come read the sign and it says this, and the baseball people are lighting the mat, don't you think it could cause, cause a controversy when the dense people are lighting all your lights and stuff like that?
All, all you'd have to do is say that the parks should open daily between dawn to dusk unless it's approved, uh, pure or approved activities.
What does the sign say now?
Dawn to dusk.
You go pull that on the sign?
Well, the sign says...
Well, I mean, I mean, if you, if you read the sign, then, then you go back and read the ordinance?
Mr. President, you have, you have different things for different parks. If you want one for all, this is for all the parks. So that's Johnson Town Park, it's Garden Park, it's Still Park. There's Kirk Park, there's Marinelli Park. So do you really want them to be open until eleven at night, even during the winter, when the weather is still, like, you're, you're, it gets dark early and the weather's still nice? So now you're, you're basically allowing people to just hang out in the parks when it's dark. And, and we don't want that in all of the different parks. So I, I think you could certainly manage it by saying dawn to dusk, and the signs already say that, you know, with the exception of borough approved activities.
So you're gonna limit where they can go and what time? Don't you start limiting stuff by, by the parks at all? Or we, we always tried to do uniformity here, and now, now we're going off the uniformity bus, the same... Yeah, don't, don't, don't go to Garden Park here when it's dark.
The signs already say dawn to dusk. They already say, people do, and I can tell you, with the trail, I can tell you that, that people do leave at dusk. They do. You don't see people there after, after dark, you never see people there. There, there's no lighting there, and you don't want people to be in a park where there's no lighting until eleven o'clock at night. And they say, "Well, I can be there until eleven o'clock at night even though there's no lighting," like Marinelli and Johnson Town, and on, and on the trail. You, you don't want that, you don't encourage that. So Kirk Park, maybe you should just accept out Kirk Park.
My guess, guess, acting chief, do we have, what, what do you think is the better timeframe? Or forcing, because it sounds like she's worried about forcing. What would you prefer? And I think we would try...
The thing is, we also see a lot of license on the trail, go out, ride on the trail, and the license on the license will come back. Some people will report a job behind them. We look at criminal history on the parks as far as night versus day. There's no, there's no run time.
Well, my concern is if they, my and I, and I have to walk back to my grandchildren and see people on the tennis courts, I'm not under the permit, but I would still go in and walk if there were lights in the park. Well, why don't we just accept, accept out Kirk Park? Because that's an active park and has lighting at night, and it does have a lot of activity at night. So why not just say parks are dawn to dusk?
Is that the forcing nightmare higher? It's better to keep it uniform and the same, or would you like individual parks so you can, so your officers can move here, there? No, no pressure, just get the...
That's up to the borough council. I mean, it... Procedures across, procedures across be consistent, so we know what rules are. I mean, if you have five different parks, you have five different rules.
Right.
Then, you know, if one park says midnight, one park says eleven, one park says ten. It's a park system as a whole.
Are the, are the police generally okay with patrolling the park until eleven PM? And you don't see any...
I never see them all.
I mean, we could just leave it as it is and change the sign.
Is that okay? Is that okay?
No, no, I think that that's really not wise.
Let's, let's take it to consensus, let me go on that.
Just, just put it in the parks that have lighting. Leave it until eleven for parks that have lighting.
Excuse me, if we take a consensus, we've been debating this and beating this, let's just take a consensus now. You guys, you wanna leave, you wanna make the change, let me hear your name, what we wanna do.
I, I don't see any problem with separating Kirk from, it's unique among our parks, so... I, I don't think that at nine-thirty at night, anybody has any business, legitimate business that has Davis Park or Johnson Town Park. Whereas there could be something legitimate going on at Kirk Park, and the use of the park should not be excluded to the people who are participating at that time.
Johnson Town, you have people park, they're gonna come through the church. You have a lot of different variables in all different parks at a lot of different times. People use that shortcut to go downtown, so there is a lot of different...
Well, a shortcut isn't using the park, though.
I'm sorry, let me start then.
It's not using the park, you just...
Excuse me, place, guys, please, I'm kinda ordering one at a time, thank you.
That was my opinion.
So you would like to see it separate, everything changed with Kirk Park? Yeah. Anything wrong?
I kind of agree with Phil. I think it's kind of silly to put a sign up at Marinelli that says the park's open until eleven, even dark.
So you're, so I know we agreed, so say again.
I'm just dusk to dawn at all parks, except for purple.
Seven, okay. Alex?
How would that impact the trail through...
Yeah. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I, if I stop people that are even cut throughs or in the park, like, how do I differentiate who's usually in the park correctly? Who might go pet stops on? Who's a violation? Who isn't?
People walk their dogs, take their...
Well, that's it.
I'm sorry, Josh, you go, yeah.
If I may, we do, we do see a lot of foot traffic from Johnson Town Park to the center of town. We also see a lot of night fishing in Davis Park all over.
Oh, yeah, in Johnson Town, they're out there all hours.
I mean, believe it or not, I mean, during drought season, there's a lot of people night fishing. I mean, even down here, they do night fishing.
I don't want to disrupt that, so... You change it all back to the hours?
No, we're, just before you get back to your back.
Twenty-four seven, open parks twenty-four seven.
I have a quick comment, Steve. And I thought this, because we're at the... Did I hear it start, the parks are open at six AM?
Yeah, because people walk at six AM.
I'd agree, but I actually think people walk and go running earlier than six AM.
Six AM.
I know people just got a noise place around that time. We have, a lot of people have a running club that starts at five AM, and people use the parks at five AM. That might be something. But again, my man, I think he's all right.
Alex?
I'm okay with six AM.
Say, hold on.
I have a power, okay. Power.
Well, we seem to have a majority, so if you guys want to make a comment again, go ahead. Jeff, you okay with it?
Um...
It's already hours, guys. We got a whole table to go through, so let's kind of...
Jeff, it's already retarded. Yeah, there is nothing too hard.
What was that, you already said?
We already...
Six to eleven.
So let's move on to the next.
Well, now a question. What is the, what is the, our ordinance to say right now? Do they say, they say six to eleven?
Yeah, the only part we changed was, it said Historical or Parks Commission. I changed it to Historical or Parks Commission. That was my only change I made, so this is actually something that's not...
Next change.
I think, why don't we have a secondary motion here, just to, just to strike, just not make a change to that.
That's where we're generally going with that. Let's just try to make a motion whenever you change, just make it at the end, okay? Go ahead, Josh. Any more changes?
So the consensus was to not make the change to the hours? Well, that one?
All right, you like the hour.
Okay.
You like the hour.
Uh, let's see. We have the farmer's market, Section Three. That is a, we currently read, a mass gathering consisting of occasional... If we put a mass gathering, would that then require a mass gathering permit, which they do not typically, they do not get currently? Oh, they do a mass gathering permit?
Yeah.
The farmer's market?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That actually solves both problems there.
Well, it says, let me read it here. I thought I read this person. Yeah, I mean, everyone gets a mass gathering permit, and the farmer's market does get one, but it has all the dates. It's all the dates throughout the year on one permit. They don't get one every week.
I thought they did not.
If not, it would be reserved, Steve. Then it would be reserved, or is it permit actually reserved suspension? I'm sorry, if we're talking about... Okay, that's parallel. Go ahead, Jeff.
Let me see. You have down here with the farmer's market, they include, and there's such different examples. You have wine or handcrafted items and the like. If you specifically say wine, you need to take all alcohols, because you've got cider guy there. Or is, and the like.
Well, it also says you need a PLCT permit, so I mean, that would probably define that, you know, whether cider, cider is, obviously falls under that permit as well, hard cider.
But then, you have hard cider, that's more like alcohol alcohol. That's, so, so do we want to limit it to just the lower alcohol content, like wine or...
I mean, I thought the PLCT...
If there's any alcohol discovered, you can...
Well, if we're saying wine, you're being specific, and that's fine.
Can we restrict above the permit of the liquor board?
But that's what Jeff was asking, is and the like, does that allow other things?
I'm sorry, Jeff, get back. So what's the whole change there?
Okay. We're specifically pointing out wine as something that a farmer's or grover's market may offer for sale to the public. Things, apparently, it says and the like. So we are specifically saying wine. However, if, I know, I think I've seen like a hard cider at different, at different these types of places. So that's not wine.
You want to put wine in hard cider, is that bad?
Or take out wine and just include beverages.
Well, we don't want that because brick and mortar, that's what we discussed. Brick and mortar places don't want them to start selling alcohol as per se. This was more of a lighter kind of affair, so we don't want to leave that open where they can sell almost anything. We almost want to limit what they can do so it doesn't affect the business owners that attend. That's what, that was one of their concerns when it came to last.
Is our interpretation of as the like to include other types of alcohol things?
I mean, as the like, what's, yeah, you're...
I don't have the answer off the top of my head, but we'll check tomorrow whether you can sell wine without some approval from the PLCT. Just get a clarification on that.
I think it's in Section M of, if you look at it, it's kind of defined.
Right.
It says alcoholic beverages shall be defined as any liquor or brew or malt beverage. By the liquor code, that's being, I thought that was kind of all inclusive.
So...
That's usage of sale.
Okay, so that allows them to use in the...
Usage is one thing.
Yeah.
I don't have any problem with usage. It's the sale element at the farmer's market.
We'll talk it to you, let's have...
I think because it says wine, then you're limiting it to wine, which is, which is fine. I don't think they can say, "Oh, then I can go ahead and sell, you know, bottles of vodka or something there." And then handcrafted items and the like, well, I would say and the like and those handcrafted items is talking about handmade whatevers. But in this, I'd say it is limiting, we are limiting it to wine, because we don't say alcoholic beverages. If we said alcoholic beverages, they could sell anything. This is per saying wine. And if we want to add the cider, then I would specify that we should have the wine and the hard cider, you know? So, so in other words, right now, the way it reads for farmer's or grover's market, we're allowing wine. And I'd say that that's it. We're limiting it. By putting wine in there, we're not allowing any all alcohol.
But you would have to, because the farmer's market permit, the occasional market from the PLCT, the permit they get defines what they can actually sell, and they can't sell what follows the body. You know, it's, it's handcrafted.
Can we add that to that as specified by...
You're saying the liquor control already dictates what they can do.
Correct.
So if you want to change that, that's fine.
See, I think we'll find it out. There's been, I thought they're saying, five per, I'm sorry, Ian, what's that?
So therefore, we want to add in what beverages as defined by the market PLCT permit.
Okay?
Market, I think we should just say the way it is. It's perfectly fine. Why change it?
Market, or...
Be right, Jeff? Guys, don't go any further.
I would change to market, I like that.
Alex, would you like to make that change to say?
Market, yeah.
PLCT?
PLCT.
Permit.
That's by the PLCT.
Sale to the public including, you know, the handcrafted items. Say again?
I think he just bounces, Jeff, I think he just bounces the state code in reference to their state code. The lawyers have written it, and certainly were a non-humble charge of errors. Most of our ordinance are adopted from the state borough code, and I think we should stick with that when it comes to mobile markets in our parks.
It's one of the state codes, sir.
Jim just told us, oh, Steve just mentioned that they have, the PLCT has the things that they can sell regarding their free, their mobile market permit.
Yeah, I mean, I looked it up, it was occasional market, and it was very limited to wine.
Yeah, I mean, number one, I think it has to be made or brewed in the pathway.
So they're probably more stricter than what we...
Yeah, I mean, as a suggestion, if you, if you do milk, cheese, meat, flowers, period, wine, handcrafted items and the like has approved by the PLCT permit, permit covered.
Good, good, good. Everybody came with that?
Yes.
Good, all right. Have I changed, Steve? All right, Cap, any more?
I don't.
Anybody else, any other changes? Can we make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand sixteen, that's O three, alcoholic beverages with the changes? Second?
Second.
I'd like to make a secondary motion to remove paragraph A from Section Two. Because I would like to be able to approve this, but I can't put that in there as far as the parks. So I would like to make the secondary motion to remove paragraph A from Section Two.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion. What do you want to take out?
The part that we're talking about, the parks dawn to dusk, and because the only thing that...
We already had a consensus on it. You go back and make an emotion with... We had a consensus to leave.
That's what you told me to do, Mr. President. You told me to...
All right, we have a motion of second. Okay, we have a motion of second to...
Get the change.
Okay. All in favor?
What? I mean, a second?
I, we're voting on your change?
Oh, okay.
And we didn't, the discussion didn't...
Well, we already had the discussion with all the others about the...
Well, this is the second, so we got a discussion again.
Yes.
Okay, we're discussing.
Yes, so if we, if we would take that out, the only thing we'd be losing from the initial change is it'll say, "Under the supervision of Historic and Parks Commission," instead of splitting it out. That was the main change in the other one. So we can look at the actual hours at later date when we think about it.
All right, motion second on the floor. Motion second, all in favor of that change? Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Now we have original motion on the floor, all in favor?
What?
We have an original, original motion with the changes as per...
What was the vote on second? Wait, what was the vote on second one?
The vote was on Ian's secondary. To restrict the paragraph.
We take it out.
To take this out.
Yeah, to take that out.
To take it out.
To take out A?
Let's redo vote then, let's...
My secondary motion was to take out paragraph A, and that's it. And then, and then we have our primary motion, which is to vote on the entire ordinance, but it would not have A in it if my motion passed.
Correct, it didn't pass.
No, it didn't.
That didn't pass.
She was voting yes.
That didn't pass.
Yes, everyone was voting no.
So did Phil. Phil voted yes. Didn't you?
I have, I have...
So we have three?
Three, and so Mr. Gare's error was no, I didn't see.
That was no.
So that's two.
Maybe review.
And so then, Mr. Mayor would break that high on the secondary motion.
Jeff Thomas, why are you going to take out the paragraph? We didn't talk about that still, and Ian made that motion.
Because it seems like we have some differing, we do have some differing opinions, and we need, maybe more information if we want to look at it.
I vote no.
Okay, votes no. We have the original motion on the floor, all in favor with the changes. Okay, opposed?
I have to oppose it. I'm very sorry.
Thank you, Ian, you have to raise a law. Just make a...
I wanted to. I really told him to do that.
Okay, Mayor and Council...
Where is that, oh, everybody's going to speak, but why is that?
You're not...
She's a representative.
He's going to...
I'm speaking. She's my representative. I'm going to speak.
Updates. Ian, would you like to make any updates?
I would actually like to make a motion to break into executive session and talk about the bill. Give me a second.
Why would that be executive session?
Now, I told, we're grabbing on the agenda for next month.
Because I would like to discuss things of legal nature, and so that would, that's executive session.
You have legal stuff in the bill?
That's why I asked for an executive session.
You know, state...
Agenda items go through the firm manager. If you overput an agenda item, just let the firm manager know before the meeting, so they can...
I did. I actually sent down an email to everybody and to the council president, asking for a special meeting for the billboard. And I said, "If there was not going to be a special meeting, could you please put it on the agenda for this, for tonight?" And council president did not put it on the agenda for tonight. However, there have been, I would like to be able to discuss, this is a critical matter, and it's moving forward. I would like to discuss things. I have something as far as of a legal nature that I think council would like to know, and I'm not comfortable emailing it. And I would like to speak to council with the presence of our solicitor.
It is on the agenda for next month, just so you know, reflecting all the material.
I asked for it to be on tonight's.
I know, Jester. We have it all next month when the material's coming. We have the option to put it all, when we, when we can fit it in. So thank you very much, Ian.
Would have been perfect.
That is our option.
Well, I still make a motion, excuse me, I still make a motion to break into executive session.
You didn't get a second, Ian.
Oh, okay.
All right, any more updates? Jeff?
Go.
Alex?
I agree.
Cap?
Is this that, when I say how sad it is of losing our castle playground at East Ward on June thirteen?
Oh.
So we are fundraising for anyone with Parkinson's.
Hopefully be bigger than that.
The USO dance, the gazebo with the DJ playing music of the 30s in the 50s is this Saturday at five o'clock.